All right, we'll call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Harrison County Board of Education for, what is the date?
The fourth.
January 4th, 2022. We'll stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Mr. Durico.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moves us down to special recognitions and presentations. We have none. Delegations. We have two that have signed up, and I will read our delegation form. Speakers before the Harrison County Board of Education are asked to express themselves in a civil manner at all times, with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others who may be affected by the content of your comments. This is a public notice that the meetings of the school board are audiotaped and most regular meetings are videotaped to be televised later on Tom Warner Public Access Channel 18. While it is not the intent of the Harrison County Board of Education to ever stifle public input into our deliberations, all speakers should be aware that if your public comments made here today violate the rights of any other person, especially under laws of defamation and invasion of privacy, you'll be held legally and individually responsible. If you're unsure of the factual nature of the claim, comment, or allegations you're about to make, Harrison County Board of Education strongly encourages you to consult first with your legal counsel. We have two speakers. I think maybe only one of them's here. Russell Cope? Not here.
He had a six son tonight.
Okay.
So we're gonna ask out courtesy if I run a little bit over that I could use one or two maybe.
All right, Jim Machete. Your turn to speak. And you have, yeah, five minutes, and like I said, if it needs extended since he's not here, then we'll give you that courtesy, but not to exceed him.
Mr. Darty not here tonight?
He's available by phone.
Okay. And before I start, before you start the timer, I would like to say that I'm used to speaking straightforward, so nothing I say is meant to be hurtful to anybody. Some of the comments you might not like, but Alicia will know I'm speaking truthfully. Okay? I was here four months ago at the first meeting when school started, and it was about the masking of students at school. And at that time, you guys told me that you would look into the criteria that was used and how it comes up with that you decide when to, when not to. And at that time, you said it was the Health Department. But I've gone to the Health Department. I made a trip there right before Christmas, and the ladies there were very cordial and very helpful, and they told me that they do not tell you when to put masks on kids. They will give advice that's passed down from the CDC or their recommendations. They said you solely make that decision. So that comes down to the superintendent and the board members. If I'm incorrect, feel free. So I'm sure, and don't take this comment to heart, but I would say it appears that the superintendent makes this decision, and then four puppets on this board vote yes and rubber stamp it. And again, that's not meant to be hurtful, but I can understand why the superintendent would do that. You get pressure from some of the influential people in Harrison County, and you're pressured by teacher unions and teachers. If you take the mask away, you're gonna suffer feedback. So that's taken the easy way out. I wish the superintendent, is that you? Would maybe gain a little bit of courage and try to do what is right for the kids. Parents won't say anything because they want their kids in school at any cost. If the teacher union shut down the schools, then the parents are stuck at home again, which is not a good thing, and I know what that's like. Okay, secondly, before Christmas, December the 7th, 8th, and 9th, if my dates are correct, there was an annual teachers, or not teachers, but a principals conference that was held in at the, I want to place down Charleston, Greenbrier. Well, guess what? There were many, many, many principals from the state there in a big conference room. Guess what? They were sitting shoulder to shoulder, up and around. Not one of them, not one, had a mask on, and it's blasted all over Facebook. So I just wanted to bring that out because it looks like this policy is do as I say, not as I do. So the third thing I want to get into is recently I attended two big wrestling tournaments for little kids, and both of them had about 400 participants and 1,500 to 200-plus attendees, parents from all over the state, some from Pennsylvania, some from Ohio. One of them was held here in Harrison County, and it was a very good one, and it was held at the, the, oh, National Guard Armory. Yeah, I was, I couldn't think the name of it, but it was the National Guard Armory, and nobody wore a mask at that place. But here's, and the second one was this past weekend, was the Preston High School in Kingwood, and the same amount of people and the same thing. But see, what strikes me as odd is these kids can go wrestle, and they have 400 of them, and all these parents know masks, but come Monday morning, the masks have to go on. It's like the coronavirus developed some intelligence and knows where to go and when not to go. And, you know, you're hypocritical if you don't think the situation is the same. So that brings another thing. When I got looking at that, you all probably heard of Jeff Foxworthy and maybe seen some of his comedian strips. Well, he did one that says you can't fix stupid. Now, I hope all of you aren't in this category, but I'll tell you what I mean by it. You're watching a football game on a Sunday or Saturday if it's college, and you need one touchdown to win that game, and it's 10 seconds left. So the quarterback throws a touchdown pass to the end zone, but the receiver drops the ball. So you watch that replay half a dozen times, hoping that every time you watch it, that he's gonna catch it, and you know, it's gonna change the outcome, but it doesn't happen, right? Where you get a little kid that's building one of these puzzles, and he's trying to put a, a square box, or square cube in a round hole, but a two-year-old kid figures out that you can't do that. So look back three years. We started on the coronavirus, and they did masking, they did distancing, they kept you home, they shut down schools, now they have a vaccine, and here we are three years later, and guess what? They're still doing masking, social distancing, but did it change the outcome? And truthfully, if you honestly answer, no. The outcome is still there. People are still getting the virus through the vaccine, through the mask, through the distancing, and the kids aren't the ones that are getting the virus or passing it along. It's the adults, but the kids are the ones suffering.
One minute.
Now, you can believe it or not believe it, I wish if some of you were doing your research, that's why I was hoping Mr. Darty would be here, because I know that he knows the numbers. He's done a research. He's gotten on the computer, listened to different news, and checked it out. And I'm not trying to get anything personal. I have three grandkids in school. I feel bad for all these little kids. If you do this research, you're gonna find that these kids are suffering from social, emotional, and mental problems now because they're in a mask.
Mr. Machete, your time is up.
Okay, but you said I could have a couple of runs.
You already did. That was, you had five plus five.
Okay. Could I make one other comment then?
Very quickly.
Okay. All I'm asking is that we let these kids return to normal life, check the stats, you'll find there's been like 2,800 suicides out of students. Compare that to number of deaths with coronavirus, and I won't bother anymore.
Thank you, Mr. Machete.
And thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Brings us down to superintendent's update. Ms. Stover?
Sure. Mr. Hammerich, we have, I have just a few things. I wanted to update you on the Victory Project. There was a, a meeting this morning, the usual meeting with the group and Mr. Lopez. I don't know that there's a lot new to say, but you can at least update on where they're at in the progress of that.
Well, they're finishing up the roof on the new section, so the four classrooms. It's taken a little while to get the insulation. A lot of times that roofing insulation is, is backwatering and has to be pretty bad. So that part of it is almost complete. They brought a structural engineer to reaffirm that the steel is in good shape and the sheeting on the existing roof. So they've done some testing. Everything is in good shape. We're really kind of getting to the nitty gritty at this point, more of the inside decor and things like that. So things seem to be going really smooth. They're starting to put some of the inlay and the brickwork where the windows are going. So it should really take some shape where you'll see a noticeable difference within the next month and a half. But there aren't any big surprises now, so.
The other piece of that is the staffing. It's coming closer to get into the new building, so Mrs. Nancy and Julie, Julie, they worked on, you know, how much that, how many staff members are we gonna need? And we've looked at the blueprints and developed that. Ms. Leesburg has worked very hard making sure that seniority is correct. She's verified that, all of the employees. And so those staff members will be placed according to seniority. So it's a very distinct process. So everything is done seniority-based, beginning with professionals in service. So this Friday, that will take place. All the staffing in the Victory, new Victory Elementary will be placed, and so we'll have that established. So that way, we can go into personnel season knowing what we need to do as far as transfers and things go. So that's pretty much on track here, and that's gonna happen this Friday. Unfortunately, all the faculty sent us in the county voted two years ago to allow the faculty in those two buildings to merge into the new building. So that was already taken care of a couple of years ago. So that's exciting.
I like, like, you know, I know how things have been done in the past, but this new building and everything being redone and everything, I do feel that they should have a hand in. I know it's crazy about what collars you're gonna put in and everything. I just hope that you and your staff work with them and also have input into it to where, you know, this is a nice, bright school, so receptive. You know, I go back to the Bridgeport at Johnson Elementary, how it was, you know, how it was handled.
How'd you do that?
And I really just like to see a lot of bright collars and everything.
Let me research it right now.
So.
Mr. Durico.
The colors that were chosen were red, white, and blue, so there's gonna be a lot of nice reds and blues.
How many red, white, and blues are we gonna have to sell here?
Well, that goes along with Liberty.
And go along with the middle four.
Yeah.
Out near middle, Johnson.
But I think you can throw in some silver and some other things with that color, just to break up, to break up some of that.
You know, I had the palettes already chosen, and I have brought this up many, many times. And it's not that I don't value the input of the people that are there, but the people that are there are just now. Like, when we started Johnson, there was a whole separate group of people there, and now they're graduating, and we're sitting with these colors. When we were at the Bridgeport Conference Center, the colors there were beautiful and everything like mixed and matched, and we actually, you know, I like mid-century, and they were all mid-century colors. And I asked them, and they said the architect brought them palettes that then they chose from. And so I don't know how that goes, but I, I mean, there's people that are skilled in this. Like, for example, you never put, you'll never go into a restaurant with blue because it makes the food look green. There's a skill to this. I mean, think of a restaurant that's blue. You won't. So there is a skill to this, and, and it's not that I don't value the input, it's just so temporary when you look at the big picture and the money we're putting into this. And I just really think professionals, like Doug said, should be involved.
Well, actually, with this project, we had a meeting early on, and mainly because they needed to get the materials ordered early because they were afraid they wouldn't be available. So they did bring boxes of different palettes of, you know, if it was going to be carpet, if it was going to be tile, and they matched them up according, and then made recommendations. And then the principals, I actually was there, that had an input into it. I believe Mr. Lopez was there at that meeting.
And I think you should.
So there were more, there were more people, I think, involved in that.
First of all, they voted on staff and students, and both schools voted.
On the collars.
They come up with a great name, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Victory kind of lends itself to those collars that were put in high school.
And you could use their original collars because they're South Harrison.
Right. So, so they also then, the architect brought collar squads and spent probably three hours going over all that, and both principals, Wilsonburg and Adams, worked together to put together some of those collars. And they were very organized so that they were, the collars would work well together. And then, and then have it, it's just one, you know, one, if we're using red, for example, everything's the same shade of red. If you're using blue, it's all the same shade. And then to, you know, accent those collars with some of the neutral collars, and then there's other, you know, options available to.
You know, I just wanted, just to, just to stress my point here, when you said that you met with the principals. Well, two of those principals are now sitting in this room up on this podium, so they're no longer principals.
No, no, which is what's asked.
I know, but what I'm saying is, this is what happens, and that's why the input of the superintendent and you.
Right.
And architects are so important. It's not to be, to belittle what, you know, other people's opinions. It's just, this is the perfect example. We have Julie and we have Tammy sitting up here, who were the principals in the beginning, not Julie, but, you know, you know what I'm saying.
Right.
There are changes and people grow. So I just really like to see that done professionally.
And I agree with that to the point, but to the flip side, I also agree that, that the feeder area of schools, I think it's a good thing when they use the same color scheme. That's what they, you know, Bridgeport does, that Lincoln, they do that down there, to where the feeder school is feeding into, you're using the same colors. I'm all for that.
I think they should always be, I just have never understood Nutter Ford. Nutter Ford's red, white, and blue. Johnson Elementary, if it was just red, white, and gray, that would have made sense, but when they added the blue, that doesn't make sense, because I agree with Gary.
Yeah, I think they should, it should be the same.
I do.
Your pee-wee, football, and all that, they use their same collars for their, their schools, so.
Well, I'm not trying to make a mountain out of mold.
I know what you're saying because of the grades we got stuck with at last.
I'll never get over that one.
But I think with the red, white, and blue, you don't have, that's not gonna be a problem.
There's gonna be.
You can't really dull down red, white, and blue.
The lockers there are gonna be like a ruby red color. That'll, I mean, there's gonna be some pretty, the tile has some blue in it.
Well, you know, back in the old days, back when you was, everything was, you know, the yellow, the yellow, the green.
Yeah, yellow, blue, or, or, or white.
Yeah, that was all the choices they had. And they, you know, they worked, they worked, but.
I think I'm talking about more of the design inside. I'm not really talking about the school colors other than the blue one.
They did make recommendations, like they felt that these color palettes would go well together, and they would pick from those.
Yeah, one fork could be one area.
Yeah, because I'm sure there's colors, I mean, just like in doctor's offices, that are calming and for better learning and things like that.
They actually, at the time, checked to make sure it was gonna be available too because of COVID.
Just a quick thing, it's just like, when I was at Robert C. Byrd, okay, their colors are Kelly green, royal blue, and white, okay? You know, you could only do so much with Kelly green, royal blue, and white. So one, one day I got a disingenuous idea that I wanted, I wanted to see what did that look like on black? Okay, I was told no, our colors are royal blue, and, so I had a shirt made of my own, okay, with black, with those colors on it, and I mean, it just popped. It jumped off, and all of a sudden, hey, that's right, can you give me one of them shirts? Can you give me one? And so the first thing that we added some black, then we used some gray, you know, just a couple of other, and other neutral color to go, to help, you know, just to give it a different change, different look and all. So like I said, it's just, you know, it's just, to me, it's, it's an elementary school, and I want it to be lively looking, and I want to, you know, the kids.
Like I said, I think red, white, and blue gives you that.
Yeah, red, white, and blue gives you that.
You don't give much choice.
But, you know, you're gonna add some other neutral colors to it to help, I think. Oh, boy.
And we don't want Doug to pick, because he's up to 17 colors already.
No, 16 would be all right, not 17. Okay.
The only other thing I wanted to let you know is we're going into really personnel season. You're gonna, she'll be starting, she'll work on that, Ms. Leesburg with the departments and of course with the principals, so that's coming up. We also have a new person this year that will be taking over our calendar, the school calendar. That's about the time we start working on our school calendar to present to the board and to, he'll be putting together a committee. That's Mr. Durico, by the way.
Oh, Mr. Durico.
He's gonna be doing the calendar. He came to us with some school county experience putting together calendars. He's got some great ideas, and so we've already had a little bit of discussion about some of the big pieces of the calendar. So that's coming up, and then also our budget season, putting together a budget.
Also, we're gonna have, I think we ought to have it.
So our budget season will be coming up, and if you would, if you approve, if the board's desire to approve Mr. Stappor this evening on the agenda, then we'll be working on the budget. We haven't gotten to that yet, so that's all we have for.
Three million to there for an ice machine.
Raises down to approval.
Mr. President, may I say something? I'd like to ask the superintendent and their staff if they would be willing to check the levy rates or check into looking at the incentive pay for the service personnel. It's not the same for professionals, and I was wondering what the additional cost would be or what the possibility of meeting that same threshold for the professionals for the service personnel. So if you could look into that and find out some information.
Are you looking at that possibly for this year?
I would say whatever's feasible for the next year.
Maybe the next question.
Yeah, maybe next year, yeah, because, I mean, we're already halfway into the year, and the incentive pay wouldn't probably take effect in the first semester, so I think that it would probably be best to do it for the next, next year. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Moves us to approval of consent items, your motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
My motion is seconded. Any discussion?
I just had a few questions on it, just because I wanted to see. The one question I had was on page, the very last page, UTC and the utilities is crossed out. I was just wondering.
Are you looking at the monthly financial?
Yeah, yeah, the financial, December 14 is called December. And description is UTC, and then there's some utilities, and then utilities is spread.
Oh, or something was written on that that says UTC.
I think that, I mean, I can check on it in the panels, but I'm thinking that it's basically, they were needing to have UTC, and somebody wrote utilities on it for some reason and just hashed it out. I mean, I need to find out if that's all.
Well, my question is, what does that mean, UTC?
Oh.
Oh, I know that, but like, where are we paying $20,000?
You know what? There is like propane on there, industrial supplies, MCM.
We're the payer, then, we keep their account, so it's not coming from our money, but we're the one that writes the checks and pays all the bills for you.
You're basically the fiduciary.
We're the fiduciary, fiscal agent for UTC, so when, there's always UTC payments on there. It's not coming out of our pot of money, it's coming out of theirs. We just, they don't have finance to write, or buy all the multi-county, and one of the counties is being fiscaled, and that's us. The county's seen it.
All of their money was.
Their money. We, every check that is written on UTC comes from here.
Okay.
But it's their budget.
It's their money.
It's their money.
They have a separate fund, so you'll see those on there, but they're the ones approving their own during the board member, board meeting. They approve the bills, but we're the ones that actually have to write the check. Same way with me, you know, my job, I have a board, but my fiscal agent is the county commission, so they have to write all the checks. No, my board approves it, they write the check.
Plus, at the end of the year, he has to do all their paperwork.
That's their checks, basically.
Is he paid, is he paid?
Yes.
I know before there was a separate payment, is.
Yes.
Or you're talking about the extracurricular, she's talking about maybe for the financials, that extracurricular contract that she has.
Yes.
Yeah, that's.
That's completely separate. And UTC had contracted single to, to provide their financials to the auditor's office. I'm not contracted the same, because it wasn't contracting treasurer, it was contracting president.
Okay.
But as for the fiscal agent part, basically, I mean, that's all we are, we're like a bank. So what happens is, is they, UTC comes up with their, like, what they pay, how they pay it, they approve it, they send it through all of the processes. The only thing we do is we receive it, we act as print check, and send it out. And then at the end of the year, when the auditor sent it to UTC, they also come in for us, and we, we are monitored for handling that money. So we don't have any decision-making authority for what the UTC board does. They approve those executive orders, they do everything along those lines.
So that's what the separate contract was.
It was to prepare the financial.
That's separate. That, that's for the audit, where to prepare.
At the end of the year, there's always financials due at the end of the year.
We are by law required, basically, they, they deposit their money with us. It's their money. It's deposited with us, and when they need a check written, we have to write it, but it's not coming out of our money, it's coming out of theirs. It's just that.
I understand that, but I am asking you about the service part.
The extracurricular.
Yes.
But that's all different.
In other words, I just want to make sure we get that straight before the development is transitioned.
Right, and, and that comes down to the UTC can at any point say, we want to offer to this person or that person. Now, it's problematic because that person then has to come in, because we keep their books here, so if they hired someone separate other than that, they have to come in here and have to share information, which really is better than if you, you would be going it without getting compensated, while the person getting compensated is taking your time to do it, so.
Discuss that with his salary, is that what you're interested in?
Just with everything, yeah.
Maybe get all part of that salary.
And make sure that's all the work, that, that all of this gets cleared up before, I mean, it's the beginning of the year.
But by law, we have to be the fiscal.
I understand all that, but I am totally.
We're talking about the extra people.
I'm just talking about.
And that's the audit, of course.
And I'm just asking that we get that all straight, right?
And I think what you're saying is, we don't want the person who comes and does it now to get any, you know, get your change if he's doing the same amount of work that previous person was doing, correct?
And I also don't want him in an uncomfortable situation.
Right, right.
At the same time. I'm just saying that's, let's get that straight, and I mean, I'm sure.
Well, we've already, we've already discussed it at a couple of board meetings, that, you know, because that was asked by then, you know, now that we're, you know, we was in limbo, and, you know, how was we gonna handle it? And, you know, Dor told that once we got everything straightened out and then personally informed and felt comfortable with it, that we perceived that he would.
Yeah, I'm just making sure of that when I saw that on there.
Yeah.
The only other question that I have on this is the copier charges.
What page is that on? Is that MCM?
I think it was, yeah.
An MCM copier.
What?
The MCM business systems, is that it?
Uh huh.
For copier charges.
Thirty.
I couldn't speak to that. This is, this ring, from being a school administrator, a few years ago, instead of schools independently contracting for copiers from different places, we did one contract for all the copiers across the county. So that would be the fee for every building, our, our building.
Because we're leasing, correct?
We're leasing those with MCM.
Who, MCM?
MCM was our copiers, and it was a contract. I believe it was a three-year.
I believe it was a three-year contract with them.
How much, thirty?
It very well can be because my schooling was close to ten thousand.
I, I pay about.
Every year.
It works, I pay, but that has to do with, I mean, those leases include the leasing machine, maintenance.
Toner.
Toner, you don't have to pay for toner.
They come in and work on them.
It's a much better deal.
Yeah, I was the one that actually, I was the one that actually.
I think I have two, I have two copiers and we're around four hundred.
As a school administrator, it was a much better deal because we were spending a lot more money.
And quite honestly, it's better if you have one vendor because all the copiers are pretty much the same when they break down. They, the place that is serviced in them is more likely to have the parts.
The repairs are quick. M C M is quick on repairs.
Oh, I, I just would pay it, that's.
But if they had, if they had twenty-five different copies, they may not keep the parts in stock.
Yeah, I'm saying you paper on that because I know we did one.
Now, paper's separate.
No, paper, yes. Cases of paper would be separate.
But toner is an expensive thing. Maintenance is a way.
They do parts, they do everything.
If you bought your own copier, one maintenance call would, would, you know.
Oh, I know, I just wanted to make sure when I saw that.
That's what it is.
Okay. Anything else?
No, that was it.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Yep.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Michael, you still on there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay. It's okay, you don't, I, I just think it as a yes when.
Gary.
Right, we're right.
Just one more, I know we said that and, and on the same discussion, I'm sorry I let you go off. If you go off one page, then there's another charge for a copier for sixty. That's kind of what I was kind of just trying to get straight. So if you go up one page.
That might be the title.
Oh, okay.
Might be missing.
So it's a forty-six.
Sometimes you get a separate bill for overage, meaning you get a lot of copy, you went over the, the amount that you relied at.
Sixteen thousand.
Oh, yeah.
And thirty. It's on the very first page. So on the deep, there was a sixteen thousand and if you go down on the sixth, there was a thirty thousand.
To the same.
I can't find it, I don't think.
Is it, is it to the same?
Page one and it is right in the middle. Vendor four. Right here on the very first page, there's sixteen thousand. Fifteen thousand, one fifteen. And then if you go down to the one three digits.
Oh, I see, the M C M business is.
For sixteen thousand. And then there's.
But it doesn't say copier, does it?
Yeah, that's exactly that. Like we purchase one.
We generally don't purchase the. Do you have any ideas, Joseph, what that would be unless that would be a title? Could you know how they're coded? Because they have their own copiers.
Yeah, if you just bring it back to them.
Yeah.
Or send us an email. Just know what that is.
Look, everyone's a lot of simple standouts. Not very often, not very often, but when it does, I, I do like to ask them how they know.
Okay. That brings us down to new business, out-of-state travel study request.
I'm moved that we approve the out-of-state travel study request.
Being moved, is there a second?
I'll second it.
For discussion?
Yeah. My, my only, I was looking at that and right now, the one where we're going to go to Kennywood Park or wherever, I, with, with the things that are going on, it's, you know, and I know it's at the end of the year and we don't know what, what the future holds down the road here. I think we approve it with, if we approve it, you know, because then, then all other schools are going to start, you know, booking these things also. And then, you know, I think there, there has to be a built-in escape positive, you know, if things don't go well health-wise, you know, in, in the school and schools have to be, you know, if they would have to be closed down or things like that there, that we would, I don't even know whether we would want to approve them going to.
I just, I just received an approval on something similar in my own business and what they did is they approved it with exception.
Well, contingent upon. And, and that's good back to my, my thing, and I've, I've always been against, I mean, usually, you know, there's always some sort of educational element in it where it says Carnegie Science Center, which ends up being about a twenty-minute stop on the way to Kennywood. This one doesn't even, doesn't even make that practice. So I, I have a little issue with that, at least if you, you need to make it, especially, you know, we may be to a point where we miss some school between now and then and, and there ought to be some educational, you know, I've said it before, I don't know why we don't go to Washington DC anymore, it's not that much further, but we keep going to Kennywood and I understand, you know, you're trying to, to reward kids, but usually, we've always had an educational component to it.
Maybe, maybe prove the other two, pull that one out and have them add something.
The educational piece.
Educational.
It does have an educational piece.
It does?
I just don't think it says it on your site.
It says, well, having an educational yet memory-making experience, but it doesn't say what. And it only says Kennywood Park, so I would, I would agree if you want to amend the motion and then bring it back, we've got time, but I don't want to prove it if it's not specifically spelled out.
Is that an annual tree that?
Probably cut it out on Angela's, they just give a whole list. It goes through what it's. Things that happen before you go. And if you look on the page just down through it, it'll tell you.
Hey, another thing, I'm going to need to recuse myself on, Julie, you're go on.
The Quiz Bowl.
Okay, do we?
On the Quiz Bowl.
It's noted.
Is that an annual quiz, maybe you don't, or is that something that?
I think we, they've done it for years. They do a STEM activities leading up to it where Thresher comes in and they build roller coasters, they do all kinds of things to build up to it and they use it for us, uh, science, math and engineering.
Okay.
But it is fun.
It's on there, that part?
Okay.
All right, go ahead and look at it, you know yourself. It's one of those things. Where they're going.
I can under, I can understand the educational component piece to that, if you're learning about engineering and science.
I just knew where I signed it off on, when it came to me.
Those trip requests now are going to be supervisor of that department, like she gets the elementary ones, Chris will get the secondary ones. So they're looking at them first and vetting them, then it goes to Angela to get put on an agenda.
Okay.
So we're trying to get eyes on them before they get to here, so hopefully we'll have.
And that's, and my only other.
That's good.
Right, you can't see the other idea.
My only other question is a hundred and ten dollars, that's not going to be cost prohibited to students that can.
No, everyone who, that's, they sell popcorn all year and everyone who can't pay, can't pay.
It's fun to try, I just don't want it to be a hardship and some student doesn't get to go.
There are lots of sponsors who do that.
And then the charter bus is fun. The charter bus. Sorry, Jimmy. Sometimes we like charter buses.
All right, anything further?
Okay, so we're going to leave it as, as is, okay.
Since they have the backing paperwork, that's all I needed.
Concerns, of course.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And that's with the refusal from Mr. Dodery. Approval of B O E boiler project.
I can mention to approve the B O E boiler project.
Is there a second?
Is, are you going to approve it with specific, a specific mention of W R Drake?
What's your recommendation for?
Yes.
The low bidder?
With, oh, oh, oh. Your recommendation, the low bid, W R Drake, a hundred and thirty-two, six hundred and nineteen.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for, to accept a bid from W R Drake, which is a local company here, a hundred and thirty-two thousand, six hundred and nineteen for replacement of the boiler. And any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Contract between Harrison County Board of Education and Kristi LaMasters, parent trainer. Does this say continuing?
A new person.
New.
Yeah, this contract, we have had the same person in that position for years, so this is the first time this has happened. Melanie Waybright, so of course that falls under the curfew, Suzie Miller.
Okay.
And her department, so.
I didn't know it was, it were time.
Yeah, she did. So the perk, our perks.
Okay, is there a motion?
Message approved.
Seconded.
The contract between Harrison County Board of Education and Kristi LaMasters as a parent trainer.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, no old business, no policy updates, personnel matters. We do have one agenda adjustment for pulling of Macy Jackson, D C T business teacher, full-time, two-hundred-day employment term, Bridgeport High. So that's been pulled.
Well, well, what was the?
The job, well, you can speak to that. We spoke with Matt.
She's going to have a meeting tomorrow with Mr. DeMato and discuss specifics before
She was not comfortable accepting the recommendation.
Right.
At this time.
He wasn't or she wasn't? I mean, I, I don't know.
She wasn't. So they, they discussed more details about the position before.
Okay.
And what are we talking about?
So who's going to be in the position until such a point as?
Oh, 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 I see.
There's a student in the position.
Okay, I see.
Okay, so.
This is for next year anyway. She would have assumed the position till next year.
So we'll see it in a future.
Okay.
Okay.
And it may be her.
You're right, it might be.
Okay, so, all right, so is there a motion? And that's with the agenda adjustment.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, any discussion?
I do have something I'd like to bring up and, and let's see, page. It's under service employee recommendations, page nine. We are creating a special education aide for bus duty, forty-five minutes per day as needed. I'm, I'm not opposed to that, but my question is, how many aides do we have on buses? Number one. And number two, if we don't have an aide on every bus, should we look at putting an aide on every bus? So that we take some of the pressure off the bus driver for having to, you know, be the disciplinarian as well as the bus driver and keeping his eyes on the road? So if, if somebody could look into that for me as well and maybe the feasibility of it.
I, I did believe that it's kind of sporadic and you get brought to us and there's a need on the bus, we put a aide on.
Sure, sure.
And then so I, we will look at that and give you an idea.
There's only a need on, for an aide on the bus till you need an aide on the bus.
Well, and that's the thing, I mean, in, in the one, the one instance that the bus driver takes his eyes off the road to discipline a child and smashes into the back of a, you know, Toyota Camry, I mean, that's, that's not a good.
And honestly, if, if, we've done a way better job of recruiting bus drivers, but that would be a better recruitment tool.
Yeah.
You could probably speak to that.
So, so it is something to.
We, we will absolutely look at that because I think.
I mean, that would be a recruitment tool. I, I think most bus drivers would give back some money if they could have a.
So we know how many aides do we have on buses now? How many?
There's a lot of issues with that if there's a high number of little ones that they have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
It's a super, usually it's a bit of an issue.
That's what I'm saying, we put them on the ones where we have trouble. When you don't know you need one till you have trouble.
Correct.
By then, you wish you'd have had one.
Correct, right. So I wanted to follow up on that, just follow up on that, let me know.
Now, is that when they bring the child to school?
Well, it would be on, it would be an aide, both school and after school. So, I'm not talking about the specific one.
Not on the bus, we're just.
You're talking about this specific position? No, I'm, I'm talking about in general, putting one as a, as a group, putting as a total group.
Just like our regular buses.
Yes.
And we have several that have them already.
Right, right. Yeah. And then, and then you could determine as needed which ones would be special education and which ones wouldn't be special ed. Right? So it would be, it would be something that we could, we don't necessarily have to exclude special ed aides, but we could include regular aides to be on bus runs as well.
We can easily look to see how many current extracurricular contracts we have.
Okay.
That'll give us exactly how many we have.
Okay.
And what buses they're on.
Thank you.
Give that to you.
So do we have a left?
Yes.
Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion?
Oh, are you, you're the.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And that brings us down to board member comments, we'll switch the rotation in the new year, Mr. Hope.
Okay, I have, I have a couple of things. One, first off, I'd like to say that for Mr. Hammerick and Mrs. Stubbler, get down here to the easel, if you will. We put a young man a long time ago in charge to take care of something, took care of it and it's been buried away because I called him the other day and asked him, so if you will get down here and I can cover this and, yeah. I think when this all started several years ago.
Your right leg is falling.
It is.
Yeah.
And they can't get up.
Feels like my right leg.
So this, you know, like I said, this started in, in eighteen, when nineteen and this was leaving twenty and now here we are in twenty-two, so if you two kind of.
Run jail. Oh, very nice.
And that should be added to the wall over there, that's. And the three schools went together, he was a W I person and, you know, now to win to make bird. And I think.
Nineteen fourteen to nineteen ninety.
I think we need to encourage the other schools, high schools in the county to go back and, you know, try and do the same thing. It would be great to have it in the whole room, you know, what school's made up what. But also that would think, like to think that we could approach Robert Seberg and maybe[1636.32] But also, I would think, like to think that we could approach Robert Seabird and maybe get one of their uniforms. We can't get, the number would be 96, and that'd be a special order, which would be very expensive. Maybe we could get a, a one or something like that and do Robert Seabird, because the three schools went together to form Robert Seabird. But as Mr. Hamrick said, it would be great if we could do that with all of our high schools and.
And as principals need to know, when you do that, it, it brings, it brings you a packed gym, and those people may come back to the next.
Exactly.
They should have R C B alumni, play R C B. And then that would give you your fourth uniform.
And I, I also, a special, a special thank you from, on behalf of the board, and I think for the county, should go to Chris Mann, who headed up this and getting the jerseys and getting them, you know, framed, and so that we could, we could do that. And so, you know, he doesn't look for any thanks or anything like that, but I, like I said, it wouldn't have been possible if he hadn't kind of taken over that project. And if we could get, like I say, a Robert Seabird jersey, get it framed, and then, like I said, we could approach the other schools, maybe, you know, you guys should spearhead that, because I, I started thinking about who, who went together to make what, you know, Liberty was Bristol and Salem and Victory. And all those three went together to make, you know, Liberty High School, and then South Harrison was Wall Street and Los two hundred, you know, five in Jersey, and somewhere along where somebody has one of those and all. Now, my second, the second part of my thought thing is, we have no idea as a county where we're, where we're going this semester in regard to the health and, you know, being able to keep the schools, you know, going open. I think it's, it's, you know, everybody wants that, you know, that we keep the kids in school, that they're going much better. I know my grandchildren are and what have you. And I don't think that any of this could not have, you know, could have taken place without the leadership of Mrs. Stutler, our superintendent, and the things that, you know, she's come into a difficult situation for two years now. She's battled this, and I think a big congratulation is in order to her being selected the West Virginia Educator of the Year. I mean, you stop and you think, you know, everybody's out there, you know, it's 55 counties, and she's, she received the award, and I think it was very defitting that she, you know, for what she's done. And I'm just very proud to serve on this board, and the fact is that, you know, that it's, it's a situation where I'm also glad that you're servicing Harrison County and leading us, you know, down the path, you know? And we have no idea which way the path's going to take us, but I think what you've done so far is very admirable, and myself, I won't speak for all the board, but I, I speak for myself, I congratulate you on your award.
Thank you.
What you've done for us.
Thank you.
Okay.
Message you.
The rotation is up.
Well, it's because the vice president is present. I'll go.
No, actually, I agree 100% with that. Congratulations on that. I think we've got a lot of time, but I have to tell you that. It is extremely impressive, and I think what you've done is just amazing for our county. You surprised me every single meeting, how thorough and how inventive you have been in getting our county directly on the right path. And, you know, thank you, thank you, a million thank yous for that. My other thing is, when we are approving, like, all these different, we were talking about schools and this, and then all these things on the thing. I know this was spoken of at the end of last year, and I really think that we need to move forward with a meeting or a discussion about where we're. I mean, we discussed it once, and then we dropped it, and we have never, like, gone back to the situation of, you know, Salem being only half full, and the condition of Northview, and things like that. And it takes a lot of courage to be the one and the board that brings it to the table. But I think, I mean, this board has the right leadership, and right now is the time that we have to discuss this, what we're going to be doing. I mean, we have WI, middle, I mean, we just have to have a really good discussion about our county. And, and I think we need to set up a meeting for that.
So would that be a work session?
Yes.
A work session.
But all this would be in the early stages, preliminary, talking and everything.
But I think.
Because it's not something that's going to be able to transpire overnight. I think it's something that's going to be, as you say, thought out and looked at.
But there may be something.
And monies that are available, and monies that.
We are looking currently.
Right.
Collecting a lot of information.
I mean, one of the big things, the biggest difference from, you know, 10 years ago to today is, number one, employees, they don't have enough teachers. I mean, that's just the bottom line. I mean, and they're becoming even more scarce.
But since the staff is, since the staff is working on it, then when they get a significant portion of information not to share with us, then Ms. Stutler lets me now also work session.
I think that's a great idea. I just don't want that to be forgotten.
I don't want to.
They started it, and I think.
You're right. Conversely, I don't want to also set a work session when we don't have any more information.
Exactly, exactly. And what about the progress of the R C B project?
The paving?
We're still waiting on the engineer to finalize.
This is getting long. I hate to tell you that. I don't know any better way to say it, but, I mean, I think I've been asking you every meeting for, what, three months?
Yeah, Thrasher's has that, and they have not released that to us, and we met with them.
Well, tell them to get on it.
I will.
Or we'll get another one.
I think Mr. Winkie's also waiting on secure entrance information as well.
Yeah, but three months, I mean, I've asked every meeting for like three months, and I, I mean, I don't think we've ever had another project that's been dragging its feet like this, and I don't know why, so.
Well, I think there's a lot of projects that feet's been dragged a little bit, but like I said, with the times and the things that are, other things that are going on, I mean, I think that it's, I'd like to see things done, say, today and do it tomorrow, but those days are, you know, not going to happen, so.
But I'll, I'll reach out to them again, because we, we reached out to them about three weeks ago. But I'll give you.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Mr. Donery?
I don't have any of this time, other than congratulations to Dora. She's a right woman for a job, and I understand she's doing, doing the best she can, judging between all of us and our opinions and all the stuff that's going on in the world, but she is doing, she, she is doing a good job. And I would like to look at the, our masking and talk about that furthermore, and also talk with the Health Department on, on what are, what are our options are. Because I understand they can shut us down with so many positives. So I just, I want to see what we can do, like Dodgers County, where they, they, they wear optional for the people who, who want to wear it great, people who don't, fantastic. So I would like, like us to, to look at those options.
I'm kind of in the option, but this is.
Mr. Vana?
So I want to congratulate Dora and Superintendent Stutler for, for the West Virginia Educator of the Year. Well deserved, and I think that she has, has done a sound job in surrounding herself with a, a great team. And one of the things that I would like to bring up, though, and this was brought to my attention about a week ago, week and a half ago, there are some, there's some frustration out there amongst some teachers in regards to students being disciplined. So I, I would, I would say that we should have a little bit more of a meeting on that. One of the solutions that was brought up to me was to actually investigate putting seventh and eighth grade students in the United Program, and, and putting a middle school component to the United Program, where some students can, can possibly benefit from that. So I think that that's something that we should look at, we should, we should think about, and we should possibly investigate that down the road. But I, I will have a conference with you about the, the discipline issue that was brought up to me as well.
Why, why could we not have a, a meeting in regard to, before the semester gets, second semester gets born, to maybe look into it, you know, a little bit more?
We could look at our county discipline policy, and actually, Mr. Durico has been looking at some discipline.
Do you think?
Inconsistencies, I think.
Yeah, do you think you would have enough to at least sit down with us, you know, in the next?
Well, let me give you some background on what I've done. Obviously, Mr. Winkie sort of takes care of the level four offenses. I've only been looking on a month-to-month basis and data, which includes discipline data, and I've not got into the weeds yet with principals.
It's the weeds, the pieces.
I need to do that, and plan on doing that. I'll be probably taking, my observation is to maybe hope what you're saying or what I'm seeing with data. Because we need to do some training with principals, so that everyone's on the same page, and I think I can't provide some guidance on how to.
That's been a long time.
I'm not downing, I'm not downing any administrator.
Right.
But I have.
There's no standard. There needs to be a standard, yes.
It's the consistency.
You and Mr. Winkie and the gym.
And I don't know if I've said this to Mrs. Stutler yet, I know Mrs. Nancy and I have talked about professional development for our school administrators, that'd be principals, assistant principals, and how we can address that. Obviously, trying to do that during the school year is a challenge, they're needed in the buildings, but that is something we plan on attacking in some shape or form this summer, prior to the beginning of next academic year. And that's a whole lot more than discipline. We, we identified some things, and actually, I want to have the school administrators identify their needs. I want them to tell me what do they think they need, so that way we're providing quality service that can help them, quality professionals that can help them, and also help us.
That's, I think, that's great.
That's what's on the plate.
All right, good. And, and same with what we said before, when you have enough information that you think it's time to share, get with Ms. Stutler, and she can get with me, and, you know, I don't want to call media if we don't have.
Processal.
It would take me some time to prepare, and I think I'd want to share with Mrs. Stutler first, and we're all, even you, looking at some things and.
Even the preliminary, but I don't want, I don't want to show up and say, well, you know, without anything.
I agree. I mean, we do have a lot of new administrators that are coming up and through the ranks, and I think that you would nail on the head, provide them the proper professional development so that they can be on some.
And let me say this to you, because you recognize that we don't always think of this way, we're always talking about the kids and how COVID has affected them, it's affected us in every aspect, and also school administrators. Things have changed in the last 18 months, and it's just good that we revisit it, look at the data, and do the professional development that we need to do.
Thank you. Well, to be included in that, I will sound like a work from record to everybody in here but not you. One of the things that, that has legally caused us problems since the day I've been on this board is professional development for teacher eval, for employee evaluation, and it not being done now. And when I say that, I say that going positive and negative. Though, when I say an evaluation, it needs to be noted for our protection and for the encouragement of our staff. And that's something that needs to be addressed still.
So noted and have been discussed.
Our principals cannot be afraid.
But I also think, we also need to, you know, and my grandfather always said, wait till one broke the wagon down, and the longer we wait, the further it gets away from us. And that's why I think that we need to, you know, talk, you know, do some preliminary talking now, then during the summer and all, and before fall comes, you know? The second thing, you know, comes on with the buses and attendance, and, you know, I just, I just think that we need to, we need to talk about, you know, a little bit and get.
I think the overarching theme is just the consistency among our programmatic levels, just consistency and.
Right, I mean, what, you know, kids are kids, and what, you know, one principal does it one way, another one, there has to be some kind of a uniform.
Yeah, you never want to get to the point where a kid does something in this school and gets suspended, but if he'd have done it in another school, he wouldn't have done it.
Exactly, exactly. And that is current.
We have to add to our, to our racism.
You know, it just like the fight.
And that needs to be added to our, whatever our code is or whatever when it comes to discipline and training. Now, it needs to be in our code and what happens.
If a fight breaks out, if a fight breaks out in school A, and there's a fight in school B.
Should all be treated.
A fight's a fight, okay? And it used to be, you knew exactly where you was going with it.
It's not, yeah.
And now it's fight, and it gets out, oh, I didn't want that, heck, I'm going to fight over here, and, well, we had a fight, but nothing happened here, but this kid was suspended X number of days, and.
And that has, that happens.
You know, and I think it all has to be, so.
Okay, anything else?
I, I just want to bring up your point, the racism piece. I have gotten numerous calls about racism this year, and I've shared them with, with Mrs. Stutler.
I have too.
And I, I think it needs to be addressed seriously.
Yeah.
And professional development, training, something that we need to look at.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
My only thing is, same thing, congratulations to Ms. Stutler, but furthermore, is congratulations to really the team you have here, because this is the first time in a long time where I can, you know, I don't call someone other than the superintendent unless, you know, you have to, or you tell me to call, or, but, you know, I've called Jimmy about a different thing. No one currently have, has ever not gotten right on it, because we get calls from the public, but it's just the way it's being handled. When I come to a meeting and we ask a question, I don't, we're not getting deer in the headlight